And we only have one topic on this up tonight, and that's the Highlands Library. Howard, I know you don't need to sit through this.
(laughing) But he's here.
No, just joking. Anyway, I know you're very interested in it, so with that, Mr. Covington, are you?
It is. I will kick this off and then turn it quickly over to staff and KCLS representatives who are much smarter and have a lot more understanding of the details than I do. This, as the council knows, is a long time coming, certainly a major part of our overall long-term redevelopment efforts in the Highlands. What we want to do tonight is to, because it's been such a long time since we have really looked at this in the context of the overall Highlands redevelopment plan, we want to have Chip Vincent bring sort of that broader package and perspective to you, and then we'll have a presentation by representatives from the King County Library System, and they'll work through both the schematic design presentation as well as the budget that is before you. Then a key part of this, as you know, has been the joint development, public-private development of that parcel that is currently and will soon be conveyed to the city antecolpus development corporation. So Larry Warren has been working diligently with both Colpits and with the Rent and Housing Authority on a purchase-to-sell agreement that allows us to move forward in that. So he'll go through some of the highlights of that with you to hopefully help get you more comfortable with that. We have representatives from the Housing Authority as well as from Colpus Development here. They're certainly here to answer any questions that the council might have after you have the presentation. As you know, we mailed out this, all of the information that you'll be presented tonight to you over the weekend to give you a chance to kind of preview that to hopefully help you form whatever questions you might have. We are prepared, if the council at the conclusion of this presentation feels comfortable enough with the information, to approve it tonight. We're certainly prepared to do that. If, on the other hand, you want to take a week or so and review the information before you sign off, the staff's prepared to have you do that as well. So I will turn it over to Chip and get started.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairperson, council members, Chip Vincent from Community and Economic Development. And I wanted to start the discussion and the briefing tonight talking about the Sunset Library, but talk about it in the larger context of all the work and effort that's gone into the larger Sunset Highlands community. And for me, I don't think there's any better place to start than with the picture that's in front of you right now, and that's a picture of all of the different partners, not all of them, but a lot of the different partners that we work with in the city, and receiving our Vision 2040 Award from the Puget Sound Regional Council for the work that we've done with respect to the Glenwood Townhomes very specifically. And I think this is important to recognize simply from the point of view that a lot of the work that the city has done in the Sunset Highlands community has been recognized on the countywide, regional, and state level. So there's a lot of great work that's going on in the community that goes far beyond the city of Renton, but it ultimately does affect the quality of life for the citizens who live in this community. And really what the goal here, the vision, is to create a destination place where neighborhoods and businesses are engaged in the community that's walkable and interconnected, that's safe and secure for everybody who lives and works there, that preserves the quality of life when new growth comes into the community, that's an attractive place to live and do business, that's affordable to all incomes, and celebrates the diversity of the community as a whole. So there's a lot of work, as you know, that's gone into the ongoing planning and the progress that's been made in the Sunset Highlands community. Going back to 2006, I'm just going to point out four significant cornerstones of the work that's been done to date, beginning with Highlands One Task Force in 2006, the Highlands Two Task Force in '08. These basically identified what are the key things that the city needs to be doing in terms of zoning and placemaking for the communities up there. That was pretty much the focus. Then the city followed up with working with the community on the community investment strategy that identified specific actions that public entities could be making in their properties and their holdings in the area that would improve the quality of life and recapitalize the community. And then finally, most recently in 2011, the city adopted the 2011 Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement. This is a significant body of work that lays out a preferred alternative for growth in the community. It identifies the environmental impacts and the mitigation for those efforts, the kind of infrastructure investments we need to be making to support the kind of growth that we would like to see in the community. So all four of these are significant investments the city has made in working with the public to identify the vision for the community. As a result of that, the city has done significant changes to the zoning, upzoning the area, as I said, front-loading the environmental work so new development doesn't have to go through the SEPA review process, assisting the Housing Authority with the redevelopment of Sunset Terrace, focusing on that third place. What is a community gathering place look like and where should it be within the community? And then finally, looking at making public investments that would catalyze and leverage private investments along with it. So the revitalization strategy basically looks at six different efforts. First is improving transportation choices, providing equitable, affordable housing within the community, enhancing the competitive economic environment that we have there, supporting the existing community as it grows and changes, working with our partners in valuing neighborhoods. And for these six key strategies, I'd like to talk a little bit more in detail about each of these, beginning with transportation choices. As part of the Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement, we identified what the transportation system should look like there in terms of providing a more complete system for transportation, accommodating all modes of transportation, whether it's for bikes, for transit, for cars, and really cleaning up and greening up our transportation right-of-ways. These are two examples from the Planned Action EIS of graphics that illustrate what the streetscape and the right-of-ways should look like to provide opportunities for all the different modes of transportation while providing green connections at the same time. Also, the city has made investments incrementally in terms of retrofitting some of the sidewalks in the area, and probably one of the most significant transportation efforts to date has been the $3 million grant to provide a pedestrian linkage from the Sunset Highlands community down to the Landing. Moving on to providing equitable, affordable housing, all 100 units of the Sunset Terrace public housing will be replaced over time. The Rent and Housing Authority is focused on upgrading the quality of housing for the community. In addition to that, they're looking at providing market rate housing as well, up to 500 units there. The city is working with them by providing property tax exemption programs and zoning incentives when affordable housing is being created in the community. Enhancing economic competitiveness, again, one of the third important strategies here. As I indicated previously, the Planned Action EIS identifies a preferred plan and does the environmental impact in front, as well as a lot of public investments being made within our right-of-ways, whether it's upgrading our stormwater facilities, new sidewalks, our utilities, really front-loading those kind of expensive capital things that are very costly and time consumptive for developers to do after the fact. So what we want to do is make this as predictable and as shovel-ready as possible. And finally, we always are looking for the opportunity that private investment really raises everything in the community by providing both employment as well as tax revenue. Supporting existing communities, this is really important because as growth and change occurs in the community, we have a community that's in place right now, and Rent and Housing Authority provides relocation assistance to all the existing residents that they provide housing for, so nobody's being left behind as the community improves. Again, city improvements to existing facilities like parks, supporting the community gardens that have already gotten started up in the community, and always ensuring community engagement every step along the way during the process. And the next strategy was coordinating partnerships. This is probably one of the most significant things because, as you know, the ownership is very, we use the term fracture here, actually, it's desperate. We have a lot of disparate ownership up there in the community, and in order for the strategy to be successful, it can't be the city acting on its own volition. It's going to be only accomplished with the partnerships that we have with a multitude of different, both public and private parties, beginning with the Rent and Housing Authority, the Rent and School District, King County Library System, and our private partners, Colpits Development, as examples of the partnerships that it's important for us to underscore in realizing the opportunities for the benefit of the overall community as a whole. And then valuing the neighborhoods, and this starts to get into what we're talking about here today. And here's a specific graphic in terms of the preferred plan that comes out of the Planned Action Environmental Impact Statement, and it began to discuss the opportunities for a neighborhood park, stormwater improvements, and a library, all around providing affordable housing through the efforts, initiatives, excuse me, initiatives by the Rent and Housing Authority, knowing that the public investments up there are going to improve the quality of life for all the residents who live there. So this is not new. We're already off and running, and we've already seen significant improvements, both with the Glenwood Townhomes that I started the discussion with, it was recognized with the Vision 2040 Award, but most recently, the work being done with the Hillcrest Building, the community building they have there, as well as other efforts, the most recent of which is the Meadowcrest Early Learning Center and the Inclusive Playground. It's a component of that educational facility that's under construction right now. So what's on the horizon? This kind of leaves us to today. You can see the proposed library up on Sunset there. The Kirkland Townhomes, we've been working very closely with the Rent and Housing Authority on getting these structures permitted as new domiciles for some of the people who are within Rent and Housing Authority's jurisdiction. And then finally, we have begun the planning for stormwater and park planning for how we would reutilize some of the space being utilized by some of the homes or duplexes now under the ownership of the Rent and Housing Authority in the bottom corner there. So in conclusion, each investment brings us closer to what the neighborhood revitalization can be. The city investment in the new library will change the area dramatically. I've talked about a lot of the efforts that have been going on by the city's dominoes, that one domino falls and the next one falls over, and it's like a domino, all these projects, but not all dominoes are the same size. For the library, this is one of the really big dominoes that gets a lot of dominoes to fall with it. It's the cornerstone on creating a third place that will change the gateway into the neighborhood up there and will bring people into the neighborhood instead of just passing through it. So at this time, I'd like to just ask the opportunity to introduce Mark Groper, who is the Executive Director of the Rent and Housing Authority. I have talked a lot tonight about Rent and Housing Authority, but I'd like to give Mark a chance to speak as well.
Good evening. It's great to be here before you and Council President Randy Corman. I appreciate the opportunity to talk for just a couple of minutes, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that might have been spurred by some of the items that Chip talked about.
Well, thank you for joining us.
It's great to be here and for the audience as well. I want to start my comment by saying that it's my primary responsibility, and I think that the Housing Authority as a stewardship agency recognizes that it is of key importance as we're describing these great aspirations of redeveloping the Highlands, that our low-income families, the seniors, disabled, and the folks that are under our roofs, that they are well-cared-for, that their questions and fears or concerns are allayed, and that, as Chip mentioned, that they receive from my agency the sorts of resource assistance, namely reimbursement of moving expenses, that they are well-counseled on the related housing options, whether it's an interim tenant-based rental assistance voucher that can serve like a rent coupon, and they can live in a privately-owned home in the surrounding area, or use that voucher to port to any other jurisdiction that they may so choose if their family circumstances dictate that it'd be better for them to live next door to Aunt Mabel in Chicago, they can take that voucher and move. Meanwhile, they'll have dibs on coming back to the redeveloped new housing, such as the Glenwood Townhomes. Those were, I'll remind you, eight-bedroom, or excuse me, eight-four-bedroom homes, and we started with that project because those are the largest families in Sunset Terrace. We had eight families there that were occupying four-bedroom homes, and they now have brand-new construction, four-bedroom homes on Glenwood, a stone's throw from Sunset Terrace proper. Children can still go to the same neighborhood schools, they're familiar with the community, and they can maintain their friendships and be close to the services and resources that they've been able to enjoy while living in Sunset Terrace. Our next project is, in fact, the Kirkland Avenue Townhomes. There will be 18 townhomes there on Kirkland Avenue, that's just north of where the Fire Station 12 is there in the Highlands, and those will be three-bedroom units, two of which will be barrier-free, and 14 two-bedroom townhomes. And we plan to have a request for proposals rolled out here to the general contracting community in the next couple of weeks, and expect to break ground this summer with occupancy scheduled for May or June of 2014. That will be our second phase of replacement housing units for Sunset Terrace. So you can see that we're on course for delivering the much-needed new housing, much-needed for a very good reason. We recently completed, just a couple of weeks ago in fact, a very thorough physical needs assessment. We piggybacked on some of the work that was done by Methune when they did the Planned Action EIS. We engaged Methune and EMG to come through and do a complete analysis of Sunset Terrace, its infrastructure and the units. And HUD requires that we demonstrate obsolescence, and that demonstration comes at 57.14% of the total cost of development. Have to exceed that threshold for modernization or repairs in order for them to, in order for HUD, to authorize the Housing Authority to move ahead with demolishing this public housing property there. And it wasn't to our surprise at all, but fortunately, the plan, the physical needs assessment came back showing that we're eclipsing 68% of the total cost of development to remodernize those units. So we will submit our plan for a release of the Declaration of Trust on the balance of Sunset Terrace beyond just the Phase One where the library is going, but for the rest of the 84 units, and expect to have that positively received by HUD here this fall. And that will then provide us with the formal approval to move ahead with transacting some of the property for the park that we are imagining, the regional stormwater facility there that we imagine, and certainly it will be appreciated by Colpits Development, our private developer of record, will have a portion of that land to build market rate housing beyond the Phase One where the library and some residential units will go. And the Housing Authority will retain some acreage and put replacement housing units on Sunset Terrace proper, as well as into some of the surrounding parcels that we've assembled the last few years. So that's my little spiel. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
Thanks so much for coming. I was at the ribbon cutting for Glenwood and actually took a tour, and remarkable, fantastic. My question is, you mentioned the Kirkland Avenue Townhomes, barrier-free, can you explain that a little bit?
That's a colloquial term that we use that means those units will be accessible for a family that has a person who uses a wheelchair. So there will be a roll-in shower, push paddle, light switches, countertops that can be rolled under, washer and dryer facility that's accessible from the front. The stove will have knobs across the front, the whole nine yards will be in conformance with the uniform accessibility standards that are published by the government.
How many of those units?
There'll be two of those that are barrier-free.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I'd like Greg to go first.
Okay.
Thank you, Don. Thanks, Mark. This is great news. Happy to see that you're doing some very creative things in our community, especially as it relates to affordable housing and the like. I heard you mention that in the Sunset development, that eight of the previous four-bedroom tenants were moved to the Glenview facility.
Glenwood Townhomes?
Okay, so one of the questions, and I know that you're cognizant of this, what is the percentage of, that you are working with in terms of being able to keep people, as we develop these new housing units and we move people out, are we able to keep most of them into the same type of housing as opposed to them having to move out of the area?
Yes, Mr. Taylor. Part of the Uniform Relocation Act requires that families that are currently occupying public housing units be rent-protected, that there not be any additional rent burden placed on those families. So that is a requirement that we provide them with, a form of housing assistance, rental assistance, either with a works and mortar like the Glenwood Townhomes that are subsidized units where the families are paying 30% of their income for rent and utilities, or a similar model where they use that rent coupon, as I refer to it, the Section 8 Tenant-Based Housing Choice voucher. So indeed, they are then essentially guaranteed that through this process, they are not going to be financially harmed.
Right. So I understand they're protected in terms of rent, but I guess my question more specifically was, are they going to be able to maintain residences in those same communities?
There may be a period of time while we're demolishing and building new housing that the number of replacement units lags behind the number of units that have been demolished. And so for that reason, those families will be, they will be deemed displaced, and for that reason, we'll assist them with a housing choice voucher or allow them to have the prerogative of moving into one of our other apartment complexes or into other homes that the Housing Authority owns throughout the city. And if that is the case, they then have first dibs, if you will, on moving back into the new replacement housing when it's finished constructing.
I wanted that to be, people to understand that, because sometimes people don't understand that, you know, when we do these types, when we're doing these kind of projects, that it's not that we're displacing low-income individuals and moving them out of the communities that they built their lives in, but, you know, there's other matters that have to happen to make it all work in terms of while the units are being built, you do maintain a certain percentage of units that are going to be available for the people that previously lived there.
Right, and we have a number of landlords that we have great relationships with that have already said, we'll be happy to take referrals of your families and house them during the interim. We'll do the best we can to sequence the demolition and construction of new units like the Kirkland Avenue Townhomes in such a way that families that have special needs or are, it's particularly difficult for them to move out of units, that they only have to move once, and so we'll do the best we can with, in that regard. And so we meet with the families regularly. We have a meeting, in fact, June 26th, where I'll meet with all the Sunset Terrace families. My staff will be there, and they will bring them up to speed on the results of the physical needs assessment that I just described a moment ago. We'll reassure them, don't move yet. We're going to be hiring a case manager that will work specifically with your family and coach you through this process, but first, we're going to provide you with all the details of options and give them a timeline. And right now, we suspect if we get this submission of our, it's called a demo-dispo application into HUD with this physical needs assessment in, let's say, the month of June or July of this year, then we hope to hear back in the affirmative from HUD within a matter of a few months, and thereby be able to tell the families in January, okay, it's official, you're going to be moving, let's slate that to happen around June, when school lets out, when it's more decent weather from packing boxes and moving, and now you've got six months' notice to start that process of planning. So here's the new case management name and face that we've just hired to fill this position, and their phone number, and you're welcome to come into the office. If English is not your first language, you want translation services, we'll provide you that. You want a home visit because it's difficult for you to get out of the house, we'll do that for you. If you want us to make arrangements with the moving company, we can do that, or you can contact your own moving company. And the level of assistance is about $3,000 per household is the ceiling of what we can provide in addition to the rental voucher. Those are good questions. Thank you.
Great.
The Kirkland Townhouses, they're going to be just north of the new fire station then?
Yes, correct, between 15th and 16th on Kirkland Avenue. You may have noticed over the last few years, we've purchased a number of the parcels that had the old circa 1940s duplexes and triplexes, and we've cobbled those together, and it's right adjacent to Hauser Terrace, which the Housing Authority also owns, and kind of kitty-corner from Evergreen Terrace, right across the street from Meadowcrest and the new Inclusive Playground, and we think it's going to be a fabulous place for families to live and have their kids be able to walk across the street and use the new accessible playground. Our seniors are jumping up and down, they're excited about it too, because they can come out of Hillcrest or Hauser or Evergreen and go over and be part of the playground after school hours. So I think it's going to be a really neat, multi-generational community. And I should also mention that two of the units in the Kirkland Avenue Townhomes, we received funding to dedicate them for veterans, so two of those units will be for veterans' families only. And that's another neat way for us to get more brightly lit on the radar screen for supporting our veterans' families during some of the difficult times that they're facing.
I'm really impressed with all the work you're doing. Really responsible and amazing that you've been able to put all that together.
I think we're ready to move on to discussion of the library. I don't know if, Chip, you haven't.
If I could just briefly, I know we're moving this along, but I'd love to introduce Dave Nielsen, who is one of our private partners here, working, I talked about the fact that collaboration and teamwork is paramount in yielding the success. I really quickly wanted to introduce.
Good compensation. I noticed that we didn't put Colpus down on the PowerPoint presentation, so I'm glad we're having Dave up here.
Thank you for having me back. Excuse me, thank you for having me back. I'm not sure I can really add anything over what Mark's done. It's been a treat and a pleasure to work with the Housing Authority. It's a really fantastic opportunity to completely change a neighborhood, probably go into a little bit of history now. When we did Herrington Square, we saw the location, you know, demographics were one thing that was existing there, but the location and the schools and the seriousness of the city and improving the neighborhood sold us years ago. Took years to get built. People always questioned the neighborhood, where's it going? It's really not going to work. And when we did that project, we had to make it an island looking in onto itself, just in case nothing else ever happened up in the Highlands. And now with this opportunity, with the way the Housing Authority's going with their development proposal for the townhomes that come back, it really makes for a complete mixed-income neighborhood that you will not necessarily be able to differentiate between low-income, moderate-income, market-rate. It'll just look like a neighborhood, and it'll have this wonderful park in the middle. But I think tonight it's very important that the most important key component is the, use the play, third home for us, it's a traffic generator, is getting the library there as the anchor. Our commercial initially in the first 111-unit building won't work. I mean, it's going to be, it'll be a struggle. But as we do the next two buildings, which we're currently targeting about 375 units of market-rate housing, so 100 units will have been displaced, 375 units of market-rate housing, and I'm not sure what Mark's total is now, but I know there's probably a 40-unit flat and another 20, 30 units actually moving back, the density will increase dramatically, but it'll feel much more open, it'll be much more accessible to the public, and our commercials start to work at that point as well, because there's more people there. And I think it'll also help the commercial center immediately to the north, and it fills the gap. Ballgreens, Rite Aid at one end, this will now have pressure to improve in the middle, and I think it's fantastic. I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
I've got a question in terms of the construction piece, and if you don't have the information right now, I'd be happy to get it offline, but I'm just curious as to how much of the your subcontractors or minority business, women's enterprises, women's business enterprises, and also is there some utilization to people that are local in the community as a part of the jobs that are going to be, the work's going to be done in this project?
Good question. Colpits is 100% owned by.
Colepits is 100% owned by Judith Colepits Nielsen. So it's already a woman in business organization. We tend to find that as, Seattle is a very concentrated market, and there are other issues with subs. But as you move south and you're in Renton, for example, you get a much more diverse population submitting bids. But we are market rate. It's competency and price. It's not necessarily the lowest bidder. It's the competent person who can do the job. We have no discrimination. We're looking for the best work.
I'm not saying you do anything. I'm just wondering if you do have...
And I have no idea what the percentage is.
And you could get back in the offline.
It could be anywhere from 20% to 60%, depending on the project and the timing and the type. What's happened now, so now I'm going to segue a bit. One of our generals is actually going to be building this project, said that his qualified bids list through the recession went from something 260 to 280 qualified subs down to under 170. Nearly a third just disappeared, out of work, out of state, not doing this anymore. So we have no idea. It's a new reality.
And I'm not trying to put you in a spot. I don't mean it either.
No, no, I'm not taking...
I'm just aware that in projects as large as this and other places, sometimes I'm aware that there are, there is a focus in terms of, especially a, you know, a community project like this, the library, where the general contractor does seek to maybe meet certain goals. But if you want to get back to me at a different time, I'd be interested in some specific data about that. I'm just curious about it.
I think I'd like to say something right now. There's a number of components in this. There's a government component, quasi-government. There's a Housing Authority component. And then there's a market rate, free-market component. We're in the free-market component, which none of those issues are really relevant. It's quality and price, and it's not a focus. It's not a discrimination.
I understand that mandatory, there's no mandates for them. But I'm just curious if there was, you know, a focus from your company that looked at that?
Not really. We're 100% female-owned company.
I think what we could do, Mr. Taylor, is, I'm guessing that Mr. Nelson, once they get the project bid, or we get to the point where we're actually in construction, they'll probably have a better sense then. By then, they will have contracted with subs, and then they would be able to give us an accurate number and three-year information.
Yeah, we can give you an accurate number, but I'd like that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and with that, we'll turn on to the main event here. And I'd like to introduce Greg Smith, the Facilities Director for KCLS.
Thanks, Chip.
Good evening, council members. President Carmen, I'm Greg Smith, the KCIA Library Assistant Director of Facilities. And thanks for allowing us to come here tonight and show you this great project again. We're at 100% schematic design. It's a beautiful site. We have beautiful building design. And we've got, we'd like to accomplish three things tonight. Like to show you, refresh memories on the design, talk a bit about the budget, and talk a bit about the schedule. So we've got our partners, the city on this. And Colepits, we've all been working hard on getting to this point. And our architect THA is here. And I'd like to introduce Jane Parker, THA, to come up and talk about the overall design.
Again, Council President and Council, it's a pleasure to be in front of you today. The first part of this presentation will be a reminder a little bit of what we presented to you on March of 2012, when we completed schematic design for the Renton Highlands Library. To give, again, a little background, we've been on hold for a little over a year now as some of these relationships and proposals have been developed with Colepits and the Housing Authority and other jurisdictions. At that time, we also, in the interim, there was an evaluation of the property line adjustments. We'll walk you through that today, as well as some kind of redefinition of scope between the two design teams. So to, just as a way of reminder, when we started working with KCLS a couple of years ago, we worked through a kind of series of design goals. These design goals were obviously to, meant to support the community and the good work that KCLS and the City of Renton's doing with its neighborhood. And these have also been vetted and presented through the public process with the neighborhood groups. As a reminder, too, you're very familiar with this redevelopment project in the Highlands area, which the previous gentlemen have discussed, with highlighting the importance of adding this third place, this refuge for the neighborhood within this larger park and housing development. The original site for the library was actually on the kind of southwest portion of this block. But through negotiations and design work with Colepits and their associate architect, it was deemed that the northern portion of this block was probably more appropriate for the library, again, because of physical topography of the block and the grading access, but also how it would engage the park and engage the neighborhood with a public entry. So that's what this diagram is showing. We're highlighting here that the proposed library entrance, which is off Northeast 10th Avenue, and then access to the underground parking garage, which will be co-developed with Colepits and KCLS for the library, will be accessed off Sunset Lane. So one of the changes since the last presentation we gave to you in March 2012 is that the library is going to be developed over one level of parking. Previously, the relationship between the housing development and the library was that the housing development would be providing the plinth of parking, which was going to be two levels. Subsequent to that, we've split the two projects, where you can have seen this dashed line, that the library and the one level of parking which supports the library is being taken on by the design team and coordinated directly. We will continue negotiation and coordination with the housing development as far as access to the parking garage, as well as obviously the common wall and infrastructure where the two projects meet. And again, this is, this is an older rendering of the housing development. It's subsequently been developed slightly further. From a design and orientation point, the program was developed, again, with a strong connection to your neighborhood. And the library organization was, is going to respond to the proposed park that will be happening to the northwest of the site, as well as continue ongoing connections with the main kind of commercial district going through Renton Highlands to the southeast. And I'm going through this pretty quickly because hopefully you're pretty familiar with the project. The design, the layout of the library itself has been slowly evolving as we've been working with KCLS. Again, the intent was that it be pretty open and flexible, again, for the long-term vision of the library as well as visibility and security throughout the facility. The main entrance, again, to orient you, is Sunset Lane. The park would be to the north of the slide, 10th, and then Sunset Boulevard to the south. With the entrance, again, very accessible, clear, coming off the northeast portion of the block, entering into with clear access to Book Drop, access down to the parking level below, and entering into a large volume, open volume for the library organization. There is very limited enclosed space within the library. Obviously, public support like restrooms, staff areas would be defined within it, as well as a community meeting room, accessible and open to the public, would have some walls. But the rest of the facility would be very open, lots of natural light and connections throughout. This is now the, kind of the range of the parking garage. This is directly below the library that we've taken on. It would accommodate 48 spots, two of those ADA-accessible spots. And we've also had to kind of bring some of the building infrastructure into this project that currently was shared between the housing development site and the library. So we've had to kind of carve out the corners, which would have been difficult to park previously, and found places to support the library's needs. Again, the northeast corner, this is where the public would go up and access directly into the library through a stair and an elevator. And then car access, which will be coming off a shared access ramp, coming down and in and circulating through with control points as you go through the shared common wall. Again, the inspiration for the project really was, you know, Renton's been a home for the aviation industry for many generations. And we were taking, we took some inspiration from the kind of vernacular architecture that supports that industry, kind of these big hangar images. And that's how it's, we've developed the massing to support the library program, with a large kind of central open area with lots of daylight, daylight and views throughout, connecting to the park and to the city, and the lower kind of service zones on either side. This was a rendering that was developed at the end of schematic design, kind of showing the quality of the space. Again, this is looking from the corner of Sunset Lane and 10th Avenue with the main entrance. And again, the entrance was intended to be welcoming, bright. We've kind of highlighted the use of natural materials, like terracotta and some stained wood. This is kind of highlighting the KCLS red, denoting where the front door is going to be. And also kind of at night and in the winter months, where lots of transparency and light going into that larger-volume public reading room. This is more of a direct-on. Again, the importance of transparency and feeling welcome, that the public knows where they're going when they walk through the door. They have a sense of orientation as far as where they should be going when they arrive at this building. An early rendering of the Sunset Boulevard elevation. Again, this one would be, you know, there's a fairly high rate of travel that's going on Sunset Boulevard. But with the improvements and the adjustments to the transportation corridor, with the widened streets and additional widened street, widened sidewalk, actually, and landscaping, this will be, have much more room and be much more welcoming and approachable. What you're seeing here is a proposal for a sunscreen device that would be very, I'm calling it the pixelated plan. Would potentially be an art, an art element that would also help screen kind of glare and heat generation from the sun. Again, just some ideas, images of the material. Again, terracotta, stained wood. Very durable material, long-lasting, hopefully very easy to maintain for the library. Sustainable features, again, a lot of it's finding very applicable cost resource of, energy resource of fixtures, use of day lighting, stormwater treatment, possibility of maybe doing a green roof, again, to capture and slow down stormwater retention, as well as providing some improved views from the housing development to the west. So the other thing that I mentioned earlier was the adjustment of the property line. So there's, we've actually priced now, by taking over that parking garage, it's some of the right-of-way improvements within the library. We're kind of showing you kind of a Phase 1, Phase 2 development for the street front improvements. The existing property line was located just north of the sidewalk here on Sunset Boulevard and located at this point on Sunset Lane. Again, to accommodate the future improvements for Sunset Boulevard, Colepits has taken on applying to the city an adjustment of the actual property line. So now the new property line is about 10-plus feet back. It's also shifted 10 feet in the Sunset Lane direction. With this proposal, we will be doing some kind of temporary grading, landscaping until the entire block of Sunset Boulevard is improved at a future date. We will be doing extensive kind of permanent improvements along 10th Avenue, which includes stormwater treatments and potentially a pullout for library kind of service vehicles, as well as public automobiles. The new plaza on the corner of Sunset Lane and Northeast 10th. And then a permanent sidewalk on the Sunset Lane portion. But again, being sensitive to future developments for the park and existing structures, we're maintaining the curb line on the north side of the street. And we're providing two-way traffic and parallel parking for the short-term solution. Again, the library is taking on shifting over as far as utility connections and support for the library. Again, in case there's any conflict with schedules, we want to be able to allow the library to get installed and be operational without any kind of future modifications to their operations as the housing development continues. And then the permanent design plan, once the housing is completed, would be providing this much broader sidewalk along Sunset Boulevard, replace the existing sidewalk with a landscape buffered edge with trees. And then along Sunset Lane would be to expand the existing, the new existing concrete sidewalk and add additional trees, along with new parking spaces along Sunset Lane. And then, again, this is the assumption that the park will be in to the northwest and would have its own sidewalk and landscape components. So we've updated the estimate to reflect what those right-of-way improvements would cost in the budget. So what I've included here is two estimates. This was the one when we went on hold in May of 2012, what the pricing for the library was. Roughly $4.5 million was our budget. We had about a million and a half budget for the garage at that point. And again, this was just primarily verifying the costs based on the design by the housing development property at that point. And we had about $185,000 in just temporary kind of site work sidewalk utility connections. With the additional scope of actually taking on the parking garage and taking on the utilities that would support in the street improvements, it's increased that site work, temporary road improvements, if it's not quite double, but has increased that scope. The library and the garage have been, stayed pretty consistent. The scope hasn't really increased. The area has not increased in that point. And this is working under the premise that the start of construction would potentially be July of 2014. So that's about a year off. That would allow us to complete design development and construction documents, get permits, and then go out to bid for the work. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Greg to talk a little bit about other.
Thanks, Jane. Any other questions for Jane on design?
I have a couple. In looking at your, the floor plan, the meeting room, there was a whole bunch of little squares. I'm assuming that was how many it would seat? And I calculated 72. Is that correct? The meeting room would hold 72?
Comfortably 72. This is a pretty, there's a lot of space in this plan. It could probably accommodate more than that.
It would accommodate more. So you only have 48 parking spaces? And there's really no street parking? I've been to the Newcastle Library and have yet to been able to park in the garage. There spills over into the bank, into McDonald's, and then across the street by Safeway. So this seems very inadequate.
I'm going to answer it. So obviously, the footprint of the library is the footprint of the library. And so you can accommodate, you know, 40, you know, we've maximized how many spaces can be accommodated in that. There's also, I'll defer to Greg as far as the relationship.
Yeah, we're working, hopefully, when Colepits gets on board, we hope we can have some shared parking in the lower-level areas. And in the meantime, yeah, it's limited what you see, the 48 and a little bit of off-street parking. But that's the site we have to work with. We've maximized the parking that we can.
So where will people park if you have a meeting with 75 people?
So the, one of the things that we worked on over the past year was, and ultimately, the full build out of Sunset Lane will provide more off-street parking, or on-street parking, excuse me, in that area. But that, we were trying to work with a combination of the potential parking would be available by agreement with Colepits, if there's any additional there, but the on-street parking as well.
But there isn't an agreement in place currently with Colepits to use their parking. Is that right?
I'll let staff answer that. I mean, Culpits is going to have parking for their unit, whether or not there's any shared arrangement that can be made. Staff has been working on how we would combine a combination of parking and the structure itself, and then on-street parking to accommodate the library. It is, we are obviously hopeful that through the overall development, there will be a much more pedestrian feel to the area, and you'll have a lot of people, at least in the adjacent housing, that will feel comfortable walking to the library from the new units that will be in that immediate area.
Okay. And then, you have a wall of windows on the east, is that right? And that looks out on a gas station across 10th?
So, these windows along here.
Right. That looks out to the gas station.
Right. And if we're landscaping, we're providing some landscaping between that sidewalk and the building front edge, so hopefully that'll provide some buffering to that view. But again, this is an urban context, and the main focus of the views are obviously to the park.
Okay. And then, my other question's on transportation study, so that would be for Chip or Greg or someone.
Right. I will say, just with regard to that, this does incorporate the overall transportation plans for Sunset Boulevard, which includes the light at 10th and Sunset Lane. And the idea is, we would do what we could do here, but incorporate those final improvements as part of the broader transportation improvements that will be made on Boulevard and 10th. And so, rather than go to an additional expense of doing our incremental improvements here, we'll hopefully combine those with the overall improvements that will be made in that general area, which should save taxpayers money overall.
So, the traffic study that was used was done in 2006, seven years ago, from what I can tell? When you talk about the transportation choices and the study that was used was from 2006? I'm hearing some nods from staff. Okay. And there is no current, currently, we have no money for Sunset Boulevard improvements?
All that staff talked about what's in the six-year street plan for that, I do think there are.
I mean, I'm familiar with what it's going to look like someday, but we don't, we're not even close to a grant or anything else. Is that right? I know we're looking at the long-term vision of what we want it to be. Thanks, Greg.
Okay. Yes, you're right. We have been several times tried to secure grant funding, and that project is actually, I'm trying to remember the exact amount, I think it's $2.4 million for the design, is on a contingency list with the Puget Sound Regional Council for a federal grant. And we were hopeful that when they were, the Puget Sound Regional Council was advancing some projects that were ready to go, in order to make sure we spent all of the money and obligated it, the federal grant money, it's a process where if the four-county region doesn't spend all of its federal grant money, it can go to other states. We were hoping that the line would come down to that project on the contingency list. It didn't quite come down. The good news is, several of the projects that were higher than us, than that project, the $2.4 million for the Sunset project, did get funding, so we're closer to securing funding. As the two-to-three-year grant funding process goes forward, very often, there's on-spent funds and there's leftover funding, and the Puget Sound Regional Council frees up funding, and projects can then secure funding on the list. But it's speculative. We don't know if there's going to be money enough to get down to the $2.000-some million dollars that we have in that, in that project. Until we secure that funding, I have to say, you're correct. We certainly are on a contingency list, but we have not been granted funding for that project yet.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
So, I wanted to go back and touch on the overall budget. Per the inter-local agreement, we had a little over $10 million to work with on this project, and we're confident we can do this project for just under that number. Get out of this. Help me get out. Where's our other? There we go. I think you all have this document in front of you as well. This is the, KCLS is a budget that shows the other costs loaded into the budget format, so it includes, you know, a little bit for land costs, which is minimal. It's just for a site feasibility study and surveying that may need to take place. Then it shows the base construction price with some contingency for inflation for construction dollars, and then some off-site development funds, and then the owner's cost, which consists of the architectural fee and permitting and environmental review and all of that. So, that gives us our total estimate of a little over, just under $10 million. Any questions on that?
Yeah, Tom?
I guess I just need to clarify that this is an estimate of what it's going to cost, and like any construction project that anybody does, whether it be our own private home or just building a street, is where the true construction costs will be set is when we go to budget, I mean, when we go to bid.
That's correct.
And then, that will, at that point, that's going to tell us, hey, we don't have enough money, we have more money.
Yeah, the cost estimators have built in a contingency for escalation till construction period, mid-time frame, so that should, you know, they're experts in their field, that should cover us. You know, we rely on them for all of our projects. We use several different cost estimators. I've not personally used this firm before, but I'm confident their numbers, you know, within the range.
And the council is not accepting this as the cost of the building. I mean, when we accept the cost is when we actually do, the bid is there, and that we have a yea or a nay say at that point.
Right. What the staff request is that the council set the budget at $10 million, and so not to exceed 10. So, it's a, there's a range in there. Well, as Greg said, 100% schematic is roughly 30% of the construction design, so there's still a lot of detail work to be done, and then it does go to bid, and we won't know, really, as you said, how close we actually are until we get bids back from contractors ready to construct. But we're pretty confident that if we set a budget of not to exceed 10 million, that we'll be able to fit within that, and that's what both KCLS and the city will work toward.
And as we go into design development, these, you know, things will get more refined, and you'll get a little more closer estimate on what your actual dollars are going to be as things get in further into design development. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think unless Peter Renner has anything further to provide, we'll go, we'll turn right to Larry, it looks like. Peter can come up. As council knows, community services staff has had the lead on this, and Mr. Renner's been the lead on that lead, and so we've, lots of hours and time have gone into this. So, Peter.
Thank you, Jay, and it's nice to be here tonight with the council. I just wanted to add a couple of things on the difference between the development that will be done in conjunction with this library and the final development, when we get funding for Sunset Boulevard, and when there's an opportunity to purchase the park property and develop that and get Sunset Lane redeveloped. And we're very sensitive to citizens' anxiety, let's call it, whenever the city builds something and then rips it up two years later. And so, we're very careful as we went through the planning to this date, to make sure that the library's needs for infrastructure were being met, but at the same time, we weren't putting sidewalks that are going to have to be pulled out, or, you know, fully-developed streets that are going to have to be trenched or something in the future. So, that accounts for the temporary nature of that, and we felt that that was obviously a prudent approach. I'd also like to make a comment on the wonderful collaboration that there has been between RHA and Culpits and KCLS in terms of the development of the purchase and sale agreement that Larry is going to talk with you about. As we've described it on a number of other occasions, it was a very complex process to go through for everybody to make sure that their critical needs were being addressed. And with four separate parties and five, if you include HUD, that was a lot of diligence and hard work, and in the end, everybody, I think, did a really good job of concentrating on the primary goal of getting the library and the development done as quickly as possible. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Larry.
For the record, my name is Larry Warren. I'm the city attorney. And Peter has described the many parties that were involved in negotiation of the purchase and sales agreement. We had four parties. A much wiser person than me once described negotiations of this type as being timed by the square of the number of attorneys involved. So, when you get four parties involved, it can't get rather complex. The Housing Authority and Culpits, the city and KCLS, all have worked very hard to try and come up with an agreement that we could all live with. And it involves more than just the ordinary purchase and sales agreement, because we're jointly constructing, I mean, we're contemporaneously constructing two different buildings, so there is potential interferences, there's crane swing easements, there's access easements, there's subsequent maintenance easements, there's access easements. And just in case Culpits didn't get their part of the job done on time and got the entrance to the parking structure done on time, there's a holdback agreement in here as well, where we're going to hold back a certain amount of the purchase price and utilize that to construct the entrance if necessary. So, the agreement, the purchase and sales agreement is much more complicated than what we would normally see. And there's a number of attachments to this that are not in here yet. You heard about the property line. So, we start off with a piece of property that's two parcels. You shift the property line to get to the, in one direction, to get the boundary line adjusted. Then you lop off some of it on one side for Sunset Boulevard dedication, and then you add some on the other side for street vacation, a part of Sunset Lane. So, you start off here and you end up over here someplace. So, that was an interesting part of the agreement. Down to more, well, maybe I should step back, just so you've heard how the Housing Authority had to apply to HUD, to, or FHA, excuse me, for the release from their trust. So, all of their property is held in trust. They had to apply for a release from the trust. And they specifically applied for a release for sale to Culpits worth part of the property to be then sold to the city for the library. So, they had to make sure that our documents were in line with that. So, it goes to Culpits, and then, not too long after that, goes to the city, but we're having some things done in the interim period of time. One of that is that those units up there have to be demolished, and there is undoubtedly some asbestos mastic and lead-based paint that has to be accounted for, and so it's not at best to just have one contractor do all of the demo up there. It's going to be more cost advantageous to all the parties to have it done by one contractor. So, that was also built into the documents. The timing for the lotline adjustment and street vacation is also built into the timing of the documents. Finally, of course, price is always an issue, but in this particular case, it was not an issue, because there was a, there was an appraisal that had been done, the parties all agreed to rely upon. So, interestingly, usually what's the most difficult part of the agreement was the easiest part, the price. And we have a number of square feet that is necessary, and shifting the property around, we end up having the number of square feet we need. There's a little over 16,000 square feet of real estate, and you're going to put a 15,000 square foot structure of it up, so you're going to consume most of that parcel. Closing is scheduled for December 1st, 2013. It could slide a little bit one way or the other. We hope it actually slides earlier rather than later, but the timing is such that that's not a critical date right now. If we did a critical path, that would not be on a critical path. As I said, there's a lot of attachments yet to be put into here, but a lot of them are legal descriptions of the same parcel, the starting parcel, the remainder parcel, the library parcel, and such things, as the boundary line adjustment documents and so forth. This has been negotiated over a fairly extended period of time, and I think we've been able to satisfy all the parties involved. So, trying to just kind of condense this, I did give you a key talking points that should have been included, so none of this should be a big surprise to you, unless you tried to pick up the document and figure out that it's going to be twice the size when it's finally signed. So, if there's any questions, I am available for questions.
Questions from the council?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Mr. President, that's the, that concludes our presentation. I think I would just want to say in closing is, the reason why we wanted to try to present this in the context of the overall plan, and I think Councilwoman Palmer asked some very, legitimate and good questions with regard to parking, and I was just confirming with Chip to make sure that I would be correct in what I was saying, that while on the interim basis, parking might be tight, there were two key things we wanted to do. Number one, actually, three. One was to maximize the overall square footage of the library, because this is, as has been said several occasions, a true anchor to the overall redevelopment of this area. So, to keep it at 15,000 square feet and be able to really build a building that would be a magnet for the neighborhood, we wanted to make sure that that was the case. We talked earlier about the overall development of the area, including the park, that would be, again, a real true amenity to that neighborhood. That will provide additional parking, and so when the overall Sunset Lane and park development is done, there will be, we think, adequate parking for the library, as well as to those people using the park, with, when you add in both the on-street and structured parking underneath the library. And then, the final thing is just to restate that when this overall development is completed, it will be very pedestrian-oriented, and so the hope is that people will feel comfortable walking to the library. We'll have bus pullouts and turnouts there, that people will be able to use transit to get to and from the library if they're not within walking distance or don't have access to a car. So, it's going to be tight on an interim basis until we can get the rest of the developments done, but we wanted to do that because we, again, we wanted to maximize with the dollars we had, the overall build-out of what this great facility and what it'll mean. And then, I think, just again, to reiterate what Peter said, we have, we're setting aside the funds, the increment between the $10 million and the $10,001,400 will be set aside for the time when we get the grants and other things to complete Sunset Boulevard and Sunset Lane, and that money will go towards the overall intersection improvements and other improvements to, will be part of the final development.
I have some questions.
Okay.
You say that when the park is developed and it's been redone up there, we'll have additional spaces. How many more? On the diagram, I saw that eventually there would be 10 on the park side, is what the diagram shows. So, I'm still going back to if that room can accommodate more than 72 people, and you've got 48 parking spaces, and five are going to be used by staff, this is just off the top of my head, you have a meeting with 75 people there. I don't, are you going to have 40 more places when the park is developed and on-street? And I guess my next thing, are we going to reach out to Safeway and all the adjoining properties where ViatWai is? Because that's, it's going to happen just like at Newcastle, where there's not enough and people overflow. So, is the city going to reach out to those surrounding businesses and property owners?
Leslie Betlock, Parks Planning and Natural Resources Director. So, we have just executed a contract for the Park Master Plan process, which will be a coordinated process with our surface water utility department because of the Harrington Avenue Green Connection and the regional stormwater facility. And through that public outreach and that public process, we'll determine how the park is developed and what type of parking facilities will be needed, if any. It's just the beginning. We haven't even scheduled any public processes yet.
And I think, in the meantime, Councilwoman Palmer, great ideas and suggestions. Certainly, this will be, you know, the idea of the meeting room filter capacity is, I don't think the KCLS anticipates that happening on a weekly basis, or certainly multiple times during the week, but in any case, it would likely occur on an off-peak basis to the retail developments in that area. So, we absolutely can sit down with some of the property owners there and work with them on some kind of, an agreement where we could use their parking, that parking on an off-peak basis. We'll be, they'll, I hope they'll want to partner with us, since we'll be working closely with them on the amenities of the overall Sunset Boulevard development and other things which will truly, you know, add value to their property and assist them in, as we develop the public access points to their property. So, I think there's lots of opportunities for us. And in the meantime, there are on-street, there are current streets there that people can park at, they might have to walk for a block or so if we have an event where the full building is, or the full meeting- full building is, or the full meeting room, the meeting room is full. But there is parking in the area that can be used off-peak.
Yeah, if I could just add that what we found with the event center is that when there is a special event, be it a business meeting, or a wedding, or, you know, some sort of a fundraiser, that the, and where we have provided parking permits as a part of the price that people pay for attending the event, if it goes beyond two hours, is that you can generalize at two people per car. And, you know, if you have a public meeting, you'd guess that there'd be some couples involved in that. So it makes a little bit of sense. I don't think Dave's here anymore either, but my recollection was that there would be continuous diagonal parking all the way down the block on Sunset Lane beyond the boundary of the library. So, and when, and when the, and when that street, Sunset Lane, is redeveloped, it'll switch from the limited parking that there is parallel to diagonal parking, which increases it by, you know, a pretty significant number. But I think the library would probably tell you that there are times when they have a special event at the library, and you could imagine that the dedication of this thing, for example, that there will be not sufficient parking, and we'll have to do something with the folks in the neighborhood to provide some more parking at, you know, a store or whatever.
Peter, do you know how many parking spaces there are at the current Highlands Library?
It's really small, like 25 or 22, something like that.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's full and overflowing on Tuesday mornings for storytime.
It's the biggest complaint about the place. Yeah.
Yeah. And you talk about the area being more pedestrian-friendly. I am not going to walk from Lower Kenny Dell to either one of those libraries. And you just look at the parking lot on a regular basis at the current one, which I know is considerably less. But there are people that just won't have a bus or can walk that will use that. So I'm just concerned that it's not going to be adequate, but-
Now, can I ask? I'm looking at Google Maps satellite view right now, and it does look like there's parking up and down Sunset Lane, there's also parking on 10th, there's parking on Harrington. So, I mean, if you look, it looks like, you know, dozens of street spots, which I presume would still be available, right? That's good. I can remember the time, I can remember that the most of these spots were taken was when the Harrington Square fire occurred.
I'm not going to do that again.
It was probably the most dense I'd ever seen the parking along here, but, yeah, okay. Good questions. I think, I think we'll want to be watchful for opportunities probably to have more city parking there, but as long as the street parking is still there. Did you have any further questions, Ms. Palmer? Any other council members? All right. Well, so tonight, do we, do we have it in front of us?
You have the option, there are two, you should have two committee reports. One would be to approve the schematic design and related budget, and the other would be to improve, approve the purchase and sale agreement.
Okay. I want to thank everybody that's put in the huge amount of work to getting to this point. I know there were a lot of parties involved and, you know, really an amazing amount of collaboration. So thank you very much for keeping this going forward. As a Highlands resident myself, I know we're really excited about the prospect for a new library there. And gosh, for two decades I've been on council, we've been really trying to get some, some focus on, you know, the Highlands. We've seen, we've, in the last few years, we've seen some neat stuff happening there, but I think this really will be a key project, so. Yeah, Don?
One, I just happen to, not being a bicyclist, I didn't think of it until we were talking about it. But I didn't see any place for bicycles, because I could see that being, leaving some of your-
She did say there was a place for bikes.
And I'm concerned about the parking as well, but it just seems to, I've had a little bit of experience with parking over the years, and the public's very ingenious in finding parking. I mean, we need to work with the neighborhood, and there's plenty of parking available there. And if they put in the angle-in parking on Sunset Lane like they're talking about, that's really going to give a lot more, I mean, you're looking at the length of that Sunset Lane, I'm going to guess you're going to get about another 40 parking places on the diagonal. You know, when you're parking it in parallel, you lose a lot of the whole diagonal. So I, I see that the parking, well, it's something that we need to really keep an eye on and be concerned of, but between people walking, the bicycle, and the added parking that I see on the streets, I think we're-
Yeah.
But Marcy is so right, we need to deal with ViatWai and Safeway so that those people give permission, I mean, because it's to their advantage.
Yeah.
Because people will then go shop, and that's the whole, that's the whole idea of this redevelopment. And let's face it, if this, when, not if, sorry, Howard, when, when this is built and Colpits Development is built and, and the Sunset Terrace is all redeveloped, the pressure is going to be on ViatWai to, you know, so I sat in that first meeting in 2006, and I thought we'd never come to this point. I mean, if you, if you'd been at that first meeting of talking about doing what we're doing today, there was no agreement up with anybody, and a lot of the players just walked out of the room. And then now to see it all drawing back together and, and the community up there looking forward to this, I think it's something that is just unique. And I think we should go ahead and read out the two reports tonight. And let's get this going. I mean, time is money. The sooner we get this thing built, the cheaper it's going to be.
Good. Okay. Well, I'll plan on presenting those to council. So any other comments? All right. Well, thank you again, and with that, that committee of the whole is adjourned.